Good evening. I'll bring this meeting to order. I see you all are present. Welcome, everyone. Item three, confirmation of the agenda. Josh?
That council adopts the agenda for the meeting of February the 15th, 2023, as presented.
Mover in a second. Deputy Mayor Barber and Councilor. All those in favor. Ms. Carey, remind you that we might have any declarations of any interest. Item five, delegations and public meetings. We begin with a delegation from Ms. Heidi Wenninger. Heidi, if you come up to the podium there with a microphone, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Cookett and councillors. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Heidi Wenninger, and I'm the mom of two children, a 15-year-old boy and a 13-year-old girl. This evening, I'm here to speak about the ordeal that has been taking place for the last year in regards to swimming in our community. Both of my children have participated in swimming from infancy. It was extremely important to my husband and I that our children learned swimming from a young age, as we were fortunate enough to enjoy a cottage on the water's edge. They started at the Terrace Lodge pool as infants and moved to the outdoor baby pool in summer. As they grew, it was back to Terrace Lodge for winter lessons, onto the OPC for the higher swimming level winter and spring lessons, and back to the outdoor pool in the summer. Our daughter has participated in the Elmer Optimist Arrow Swim team since the age of eight. This, of course, was run out of the OPC pool. Over the last few years, this team amongst other groups, YWCA and high school, has suffered quite a bit since COVID. The AOA executive managed to get the children pool time once per week in Tilsonburg when facilities were allowed to open, to be able to practice a little bit. They did end up stopping again when shutdowns occurred. The next year, we were able to get time in both Tilsonburg and St. Thomas, so the kids could practice twice per week. Last year, the children were able to compete in the spring, when all restrictions were lifted. Actually, London allowed competition earlier, but it was under very strict rules. The kids didn't care that they had to wear masks right to the blocks. They were able to compete again. The AOA executive started last spring to approach the OPC again, to allow us in, to no avail. They worked continuously through the summer, approaching the OPC with no success. It was always, "Not now, we'll review again at a later date." Fall started, and we were back in Tilsonburg and St. Thomas, just to be able to get pool time in. Right up until Christmas, the only words that were received was, "We'll revisit in the new year." Our son joined high school swimming for the first time this past fall. The East Elgin coach also tried to gain access to the OPC, but to no avail. It was a major scramble for high school to find some kind of pool time, finally gaining one hour per week in Tilsonburg. Can you imagine not being a competitive swimmer, but wanting to do something because you enjoy it, yet only being able to practice one hour per week? Going up against high schools that have minimum of three hours per week practice? I call it nerve-wracking and a tough confidence builder. Previously, the high school team had upwards of 30 teens join. This year, they were at 14, because kids could not get transportation to Tilsonburg for the one hour of practice. At the beginning of January, the AOA executive approached the parents of their membership, as they were at a loss as to what to do next. They had exhausted all resources, including MPP Flack's office, with no replies. We, as parents, embraced the request and made as many calls, emails, et cetera, as possible. Part of the reason why I'm here tonight. Recently, we were able to connect with MPP Flack and enlighten him as to the plight of what was taking place in East Elgin. He was invited to and attended a meet in London at the Canada Games Aquatic Centre, that the AOA was taking part in, and had a great conversation with one of the AOA parents, who filled him in on the history of swimming in our community, as well as what has been taking place over the last year, trying to get back into the OPC. He was fully on board with getting the community as a whole back into the OPC. He made calls to the Solicitor General, and it was determined that there was no reason for us not to have access to the pool. Since then, it has been a waiting game as to when the community will finally be allowed back in. As of today, we are still waiting. For those of you who do not know, swimming in this area has had access to the OPC pool for over 45 years, thanks to Isabel and Dave McNeese. Without them and the access that they successfully achieved over 45 years ago, who knows where swimming in this community would be right now? Many of you in this room do not have children or grandchildren involved in swimming programs in this community, so you would not have been aware of what has been taking place. There have been no swimming lessons for the last three years, other than the outdoor pool in summer, but unless you can take two weeks off work, that's another topic. There has been not training for lifeguards in this community for the last three years, of which there is a shortage in lifeguards due to COVID and shutdowns. Kids from our community that are wanting to take lifeguard training are being forced to go to St. Thomas, London, and as far away as Baden, when they used to be able to complete the necessary training right here in our community. We have been so dependent on the OPC pool in this community for the last 45-plus years, that it's time to start working on being independent. Access is not going to be there forever, which we've just learned. It's time that we create a community and wellness centre, not just an arena, a place where our babies can learn to swim and play, where our kids and teens can be active and not glued to electronics, families can have family time and celebrate special occasions, middle agers can maintain their fitness, and where our seniors can be active and enjoy each other's company. A place that is used by the community as a whole, from infancy to elderly, not by just one group. While I was preparing for tonight, I looked at three different communities, all with similar population size to Elmer and Malahide, some actually smaller. They were Wilmot Township, Wingham North Huron, and the municipality of Soggin Shores. These municipalities all have recreational centres, which include an arena, indoor pool, gym-andor courts, and activity areas. They are hubs of their communities. The municipality of Soggin Shores, which was originally the towns of Port Elgin and Southampton and the township of Soggin, recently approved a 50 million aquatic and wellness centre, providing recreational health and fitness opportunities for all ages and abilities. That is starting from ground zero. A community recreation centre needs to be looked at as a service being provided to the community. Ironically, someone recently mentioned to me that the only service that they receive from town is garbage pickup and snow removal. That's not really very exciting or recreational. It's a necessity. Why would a community recreation centre not be seen as a necessity? It entices people to want to live in the community. It makes our young people want to come back, because there's a hub for activity here. It can bring people that live outside of our community, and I don't mean Malahide, into our community, possibly not just for recreation, but also to visit our stores, et cetera. Councillor Oslatch, you might not recall this, but at the public meeting for the Parks and Recreation Survey held at the complex, one of my employees was standing in front of the board that was in regard to an indoor pool. Your comment to him was, "I'm not sure how we would pay for that." It's time to be forward thinkers, and as the councils say, "We need to do this, and how are we going to get it done?" The municipality of Soggin Shores, as I mentioned before, is seen as an affluent community, but nevertheless, they applied for the following grants: the Green and Inclusive Community Buildings Programme, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Green Municipal Fund, Association of Municipalities Ontario Canadian Community Building Fund, Ontario Trillion Foundation Capital Grant Programme, Investing in Canada Infrastructure Programme. The one thing that our community has going for it is that we would not be starting from ground zero, like most of these communities did. We already have the arena. There was a second phase planned for a pool when the complex was developed. We really do not need those banquet rooms. That's what we have other halls for in town, the ones that give back money into the community. Those banquet rooms could be easily redeveloped into activity rooms, gym, or courts. The ear has been bent of MPP Flack by some little old swim team parents. He knows what our community needs. There is money federally and provincially. As I mentioned earlier, I'm sure, as I'm sure we all know in this room, that there is money right in this community. It's time to start forward thinking, to see how we can get this done. Let's give our community a hub of activity for all ages.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wenninger. I think I should hire you for my speechwriter. Comments, questions from council? Councillor De Rosier?
I just wanted to thank Heidi. I think that was really well said. As another mother on council, everything that you're feeling, I have felt for a long time, well, the three years that I've had my son, I guess, and actually even before that, when I saw other families that had children that were struggling the same way you were. I couldn't agree more. I'm on board with pretty much everything you say, and thank you again for coming and actually saying that. That was really well done.
Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you, Worship. I grew up in a family that was very heavily involved in swimming activities. My mum was in charge of the Red Cross swim programme, looking after the lifeguards and the swimming lessons. My three older sisters were all lifeguards or head lifeguards. My brother, younger brother, swam competitively for several years. In my adult life, I've had occasion to be part of a group, groups that recovered two drowning persons. And other than the trauma involved in MVCs and things like that, drownings are a completely different kettle of fish. At such time as a pool is available, it would certainly be an asset to have the smallest of the kids in the community learn to swim, and take that through their adult life into the senior years. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Oslatch?
Yes, Heidi. Thank you for clarifying when the funding would come from.
I had heard that they had approved that municipality. And literally, they had listed everything that they had applied for. They had applied previously to those types of grants, but because they were seen as a wealthy community, they didn't always get, you know, what they had asked for. But I thought that was really interesting, that they listed everything.
And thank you again.
All right. Councillor Chapman?
Yes, it's just to add to what Heidi's already said. My children, as well, were part of the swim team, and it's not just about recreation. Swimming is a life skill. As Pete said, it can save someone's life. To not have a facility to learn how to swim is not a good thing. Not only that, but my mum is now 81 years old, and when Terrace Lodge was open, she went twice a week just to stay mobile. During COVID, that was taken away, and now my mum can barely walk. Now, yes, it's three years later, and she is in a nursing home, she was at the time, but the mobility has gotten worse, because she can't be active. If we had a pool, not only do you give recreation and life-saving skills, but you also create a place for all ages. It's not about having to put on skates and be afraid of twisting your ankles. Swimming is a really life-saving, safe sport. People who have injuries can use it. Even someone in a wheelchair with a pool that's accessible can use the water to be mobile. It's something that we've been lacking for an extremely long time, and I agree with Heidi, it's time to look outside the box and find a way to make it happen.
Councillor Van Rijssen?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I can't add much that my colleagues here have already said, but I want to thank you for getting up and speaking. Again, I have two young children as well. I feel it's very important. One of the biggest things that I've taken away from what you said today was, a lot of people in the community have to leave the access services, and that's one thing I don't like hearing. We shouldn't have to leave the community to access services or recreational programmes that we can hopefully offer here in the future. So, thank you again.
Okay. I think we're taking some steps towards this kind of thing, especially the pool. Can you bring us up to date in terms of the recreational master plan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, staff had a meeting with the consultants last week. They're working on finalizing their recommendations of the consultant's report on the overall recreation master plan. That will be, again, posted likely online for further public comments, so we welcome anybody, whether it's the pool, baseball, any of our amenities or things in the future that you want to comment on, to keep an eye out for that to come out online. We'll be wanting to get as much input as possible, and then that will finally come back to council in early spring, and hopefully we can get some strategic direction on a future vision for that, which will inform our future capital planning.
Very good. Thank you. Council is in favour, I think we, well, it's on the letter to Rob Flack again, and to the OPC, to outline our concerns with the situation, okay? No further discussion? We have a resolution?
That council receives the delegation from Heidi Wenninger regarding community access to the Ontario Police College pool for information, and further, it's added that a letter of support, speaking to Ms. Wenninger's delegation, be sent on to the Ontario Police College and MPP Rob Flack, in support of the stance from the Elmer Optimist Arrows.
Mover in a second. By Councillor Oslatch, seconded by Councillor Van Rijssen. All those in favour? Ms. Carey, thank you. And thank you very much, Heidi. Let's hang on to the, let's hang on to this idea, because the recreational panel, plan will be coming up in March or April, and this is where we need your more input concerning the pool. After all, as I think Heidi mentioned, North Huron, 5,000 population in the community has a pool. Next item is 5.2. Council to recess and commence a committee of adjustment. Resolution to recess and commence the committee?
That council do not recess and commence a committee of adjustment hearing at 7:17 PM.
Mover in a second. Moved by Councillor Chapman, seconded by Councillor De Rosier. All those in favour? Ms. Carey? Josh?
The Committee of Adjustment of the Town of Elmer is convened to consider the application 223. Additional information relating to applications is available for inspection between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, weekdays at Elmer Town Hall. Signed written submissions are accepted by the Secretary Treasurer prior to or during the hearing, and such submissions shall be available for inspection by any interested party. In addition, if a party who is notified does not attend the hearing, the committee can proceed, and the party is not entitled to any further notice of hearings. Submission or request for notice can be sent to clerks@town.elmer.on.ca. A copy of the decision will be mailed to those persons who attend, or who are represented at the hearing, and those who have filed a written request with the Secretary for Notice of the Decision. The committee will receive input in the following order. We'll begin with a presentation from staff. This is respecting the staff report from the Manager of Planning and Development. Then we'll hear from the agent or applicant, if they wish to speak, then the public, and then finally, staff and the clerk will be available to answer any questions. Application 223 is made by John and Elizabeth Remple, as the owners of property known municipally as 313 John Street South in the Town of Elmer. The application is seeking relief from the exterior side yard width, and that's the minimum, regulation from seven metres to 3.06 metres, and this is to permit a new single detached dwelling.
Thank you. The Manager of Planning and Development?
Thank you, your worship. I think it's best that we just move on to the analysis section in the report. Section 45 of the Planning Act allows a municipality to grant a variance to a zoning bylaw based on the floor test as follows. The first test, does the variance maintain the intent and purpose of the official plan? And yes, it does. The property is designated low-density residential, which permits a range of housing types, including a single detached dwelling, which is what is being proposed on this property. The proposed minor variance to reduce the exterior side yard width does not contravene the official plan policies. The second test, does the variance maintain the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw? And yes, it does. The intention of providing a minimum exterior side yard width requirement is to try to promote a consistent building line and to provide for adequate separation from the street in support of public safety. I do want to note one thing interesting on this property. The current home that is on the property has an exterior side yard setback of one and a half metres. The proposed new home will have an exterior side yard setback of three metres. So with this new home, we are actually gaining an additional one and a half metres in the exterior side yard. So we are, in fact, improving the setback along that side yard, along the street. The proposed reduction to the exterior side yard width meets the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. The third test, is the variance requested desirable for the appropriate and orderly development and use of the lands and buildings? And yes, it is. The variance will enable the owners to remove the existing home on the property and replace with a new dwelling that is better suited to their needs. Due to the width of the lot, the proposed single detached dwelling is not able to meet the minimum exterior side yard width. The variance will not compromise the existing development pattern or the neighbourhood character. Planning staff is of the opinion that the variance will facilitate an appropriate use of the property. And the fourth and final test, is the variance considered minor in nature? And yes, it is. It's important to look at minor, not based on a number of metres. It's more important to base the test on the degree of potential impact on neighbouring property owners, the environment, or the municipal functions. The impact from the proposed variance is minimal with respect to the environment, municipal functions, and surrounding property owners. And I do want to note, I did receive comments as well from our Public Works Department that has no concerns with this reduction in exterior side yard. Therefore, it is the planning staff's opinion that the proposed application for a minor variance is desirable for the appropriate development and use of the lands, and meets the intent and purpose of the official plan policies and the zoning bylaw regulations, and recommend that the request for the proposed application for minor variance, file A02-23, be approved, subject to no concerns being raised through any oral or written submissions being received since the writing of this report and at the public hearing tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Heather. Is the applicant or the agent present? If so, do you wish to speak to the application? Move to the podium. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, I'm Ben Remple, and John Remple that lives there, he's my older brother. So I'll be building the house. And the house right now, it's done its purpose, but his wife is in a wheelchair, and the doors are all narrow. It's very hard for them to manoeuvre around. So we want to build about the same-sized house that's suitable, and he's been a long-time resident in Elmer, and they want to retire here. He's got, he's worked in the Imperial for many years, so Elmer is the place where he wants to retire. He loves it here. And I hope you would consider him that gives us the minor variance, so we can build him a new home and enjoy his retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Could the clerk confirm whether or not any other members of the public wish to speak to the application?
Through you, Mr. Chair. There were no other members of the public that wished to speak to this application.
Have you received any additional communications to this application?
I have not, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Very well. Discussion from council? Questions? Councillor Chapman?
Through you, your mayor. I did have a concern, but I think you cleared it up. My concern was, because it's a very busy corner, and changing the side allowance, I was afraid of sightlines, but you said that it would actually add more to the side yard, so I have no issues with it.
Okay. Heather?
Through the chair. If I may just also add to that, yes, we, as part of the zoning bylaw review, we also review the site triangle too, and this proposal meets the site triangle requirements of the zoning bylaw.
Perfect.
Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you, your worship. The application seems reasonable.
Any further discussion? All right. With no further discussion, committee will now consider the following a resolution. Josh, can you read the resolution?
That the Committee of Adjustment of the Town of Elmer receives a report Plan 523, Planning Evaluation Report, Application for Minor Variants, A0223. And that the Committee of Adjustment of the Town of Elmer grants the application for minor variance, A0223, 313 John Street South, subject to the condition that the proposed development is substantially in accordance with application for minor variance, A0223 drawings, included in the staff report Plan 0523.
Okay, you've heard the resolution. A mover in a second. Moved by Councillor De Rosier, seconded by Councillor Rahe. All those in favour? Ms. Carey, thank you very much. Now we have a resolution to adjourn the committee hearing?
That the Committee of Adjustment meeting does now close, and council reconvene at 7:26 PM.
Mover in a second. Councillor Chapman and Councillor Rahe. All those in favour? Ms. Carey, thank you. Item five, item six, minutes to approve. That's right.
That council approves the following minutes. Regular meeting of council held on February 1st, 2023.
Need a mover in a second. Moved by Councillor Van Rijssen, seconded by Councillor Oslatch. All those in favour? Peried. Item 62.
That council receives the following minutes. Meeting of Elgin Area Primary Water Supply System Board, held on October 6th, 2022. Meeting of the Elmer Cemetery Board, held on November 29th, 2022. Meeting of Elgin County Council, held on January 10th, 2023. Meeting of Elgin County Council, held on January 12th, 2023. And finally, meeting of the East Elgin Community Complex Board of Management, held on January
Need a motion to, motion to accept the resolution? Moved by Deputy Mayor Barber, and seconded by Councillor Van Rijssen. All those in favour? Consent agenda?
That item 7.1 of the February 15th, 2023 consent agenda be received for information.
Mover in a second. Moved by Councillor Oslatch, seconded by Councillor De Rosier. Any discussion? Councillor Oslatch?
7.1, I hope, your worship, 7.1, I hope to see everybody at our general meeting.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? All those in favour? Ms. Carey, thank you. Action item 8.1.
That council of the Town of Elmer receives a report Plan 623, that's respecting Bill 23 impacts to municipal planning processes.
Thank you, your worship. This is a very lengthy report. I am starting to lose my voice. I've got a bit of a cold. Would council like me just to kind of go over highlights in the report, or is council satisfied with the report and would just like to discuss or ask questions? I'm completely open to whatever council would like.
Councillor Field, Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you, Worship. I think the report was well-written. Maybe a cold notes version would be appropriate.
Yep, I can definitely deliver that. So as you're aware, Bill 23 is in effect.
So as you're aware, Bill twenty-three is in effect, and we are, as staff, I am definitely having to apply it on a daily basis. I'll just kind of go over the sections of my report. In terms of the impact of the Conservation Authorities Act, basically, the change with the Conservation Authorities Act is that the conservation authority is no longer able to review and comment on development applications and supporting studies received under prescribed acts such as the Planning Act on behalf of a municipality and not collect fees for that service. So as you can see through my report, I've kind of given you kind of a summary of what the legislative chains are and then what I call staff concerns. So that's kind of the big change under the Conservation Authorities Act. In terms of staff concerns, it places new responsibilities on a municipality in terms of reviewing natural hazard and natural resources. This could increase costs, inefficiencies and uncertainties, and possibly delays in our review process. That is something we are still working through. One thing that is a concern, Bill twenty-three separates the protection of wetlands and other green features from natural hazard planning. And again, this is a concern to many municipalities such as ourselves, because we are a small municipality, because we do not have the in-house expertise to review all of these matters pertaining to planning applications. So yes, many, many concerns, as you can see in the Conservation Authority section that I've identified that we have under the new changes. Moving on to the Development Charges Act, it's not much of an impact for us, there's been quite a few changes. What I can say, however, is that this municipality passed a new Development Charges bylaw on December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, so therefore, we are not impacted directly at this point by these changes under the Development Charges Act. Our bylaw can be in effect for up to five years, so once our bylaw comes up for expiry in two thousand twenty-six, the changes that have occurred to the Development Charges Act, we will be impacted by those. And again, high level, basically, the, in terms of the Development Charges Act, mostly it's reduction in development charges that we can charge for affordable housing and for rental housing. I will say, in general, from what I've seen currently, since I've been with the town since July and what I've looked back on, on previous files over the last two years, we haven't had a lot of developments that would classify as affordable housing. They've mostly been pretty much at market value, so in looking at what we have had in the past, I do not see a huge impact in terms of our development charges. However, that could always change should we have more affordable type housing projects come forward. So as I said, not as many changes in terms of development charges at this point for the town. Moving on to the third section, Ontario Land Tribunal Act, some of, the biggest change with that one is that basically, no one other than an applicant, the municipality, certain public bodies, so certain public bodies might be, for instance, a public utility company like Hydro One, and the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing will be allowed to appeal municipal decisions to the tribunal. This applies to all Planning Act decisions, including consents and minor variances. So third-party appeals are no longer permitted. So third-party appeals would be from an adjacent property owner who's not in agreement of a severance or a minor variance. They would no longer be allowed to appeal to the Ontario Land Tribunal. So that's one of the most significant changes in that section. In terms of the Ontario Planning Act, I've already touched upon it, no third-party appeals, as they call it. One of the other things, again, this doesn't impact us as a two-year moratorium on aggregate projects, we don't have any aggregate projects. Act for us. In terms of site plan control, section forty-one of the Planning Act sets out the municipality's powers to regulate development through site plan control. Site plan control is really, in essence, it's a great tool for municipalities. Site plan control allows for a municipality within an agreement to have a review of stormwater management, lot grading, lot drainage, storage of waste and materials, snow storage, lighting, parking, landscaping, many different features that would go into a site. Bill twenty-three has now exempted developments of up to ten residential units from site plan control. The other thing they've also removed is we can no longer- And landscape design aesthetics within the scope of a site plan control. We can still ask for these things for any commercial developments, industrial developments, and institutional developments, but unfortunately, for residential developments up to ten units, we cannot ask for site plan control. Moving on in the Planning Act section, public meeting for subdivision and condominium applications. Public meetings no longer will be required for applications for an approval of draft plan of subdivision. I will say, however, that plans of subdivision and plans of condominium generally require a zoning bylaw amendment, because in my practice, I have always seen a need for a zoning bylaw amendment to facilitate that type of development, because the lands are generally not zoned for what the proposed uses are. Zoning bylaw amendments are still subject to a statutory public meeting, so we will still be holding statutory public meetings for zonings. And as a part of that zoning, should that zoning be associated with a plan of subdivision and a plan of condominium, we will still be discussing those applications and still be continuing to hear the public on their comments and concerns and receive those concerns. However, we will have to speak on those comments and concerns to the approval authority, that being Elgin County. Next section, additional dwelling units. This one has been a section that's been talked about quite a bit in terms of the changes with Bill twenty-three. So the change allows for, as of right, without the need to apply for rezoning, up to three residential units per lot in residential areas where residential uses are located in settlement areas with full municipal services. So within the Town of Elmer, our entire town has full municipal services, so that would apply to Elmer. This would include allowing up to three units in the primary building, or up to two units in the primary building and one unit in an accessory building, like a, like a small shed on a property. Inclusionary zoning is not something that we deal with here within the town, so I will not go into that. Parkland dedication, there's been changes to that, that impacts the development charges, for the most part, that has no impact on us in terms of the town. In terms of additional residential unit exemption, we cannot ask for parkland dedication fee for additional residential units. As well, the Bill twenty-three identified alternative parkland dedication requirements. It's putting in an alternative requirement of proposing one hectare, sorry, right before the changes to Bill twenty-three, it was, alternative parkland dedication was one hectare per three hundred units. This has now been changed from, to one hectare per six hundred residential units, so you can ask for parkland. So it's decreasing the amount of parkland that municipalities can ask for. We do not see that kind of numbers in terms of six hundred dwelling units. That would have a greater impact in larger metropolitan areas, so I do not see that one having as big a concern unless this town starts to grow. But it could have, it may have a small impact on our parklands. So that is basically what I would call kind of a high-level summary of Bill twenty-three in my report. Is there any questions of council?
Okay, thank you, Heather. I think I need to put the resolution on the floor first.
That council of the Town of Elmer receive Report Plan six twenty-three, Bill twenty-three impacts to municipal planning processes for information.
Mover and seconder-
Your worship, can I ask a question?
Let's put this on the floor first. Mover and seconder for this, moved by Counselor- Okay, you had a question?
Yes, to Heather, if I may. City of London is going through two very contentious developments where, in areas of single-family dwellings, nine-unit buildings are being proposed. Is that possible? Is there something different in London that allows that, that we wouldn't?
Well, as it stands, so in order to allow for nine units, they would have to have zoning to reflect that. So they would have to have zoning that would allow for what I'd call multi-unit residential buildings, okay? And those are very specific zones, and we have a few of those zones in our municipality, but they're already developed on. We don't, we don't have any properties that are sitting vacant with that type of zoning on it. So for instance, anywhere where we have apartment buildings would have that type of zoning that would allow for what we call multi-unit, over four units.
Okay, so those in Elmer, they're usually single-family dwellings or like a duplex?
What I generally see is up to three units.
Okay, thank you.
Most people, from what I'm seeing, are not proposing anything beyond three dwelling units, singles, semis, or like duplexes with a, with an additional residential unit in the basement, for instance, is what I find is quite common here in the town.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Counselor Ozlatch?
Your worship, just one comment, Conservation Authorities of Ontario, and writing this since November, whereth nor bear.
Anyone else? Counselor D'Rosier?
Thank you, your worship. I have a question for Heather. So I was listening to a political podcast, actually quite recently, that involved a Toronto MP and a Norfolk MP. And one of the concerns that she addressed, and I just wanted to know if it was similar here in Elmer, or if we have different regulations, I guess, but her concern was that development charges that we typically have in place, long-term pay for expanding infrastructure. So when you remove those development charges, you know, long-term, there might be down the road, basically, a roadblock in funding for future development. Is that a concern that we should have as well, or no?
Well, based on the current type of development we've had here in town, no, it's not a concern, because, again, Bill twenty-three, in terms of reducing development charges, is focused on reducing development charges for affordable housing. So if a development meets the definition of affordable, then yes, we would receive a reduction in development charges. As I said earlier, we haven't seen that type of development per se. What we see mostly is what I would call kind of like market-based housing. So we haven't seen anything that would be more like rent geared to income or lower type, I don't want, I don't want to use the words lower, but like more below market value. We haven't, we haven't seen that historically over the last few years. It's hard for me to say if we will see more of those type of proposals, but generally, no. Is there anything, Heather, that you've seen in the past? You've worked with the Development Charge Act or bylaw a little bit longer than I have?
If I may, your worship, we haven't had any DCs be waived in the last two years that I've been here, so I can't speak to that either, but on the development charge reserve, the only difference that I have to do for the treasure statement is I basically have to take the funds for certain, like water and wastewater, and allocate sixty percent, based on our DC study, for, for forward planning for, for payment, like for submitting new infrastructure. So right now, we have a fairly, you know, decent DC reserve. I don't see any, there's no projects in our DC study that I don't believe we can fund at this point. So if we had, you know, ten affordable massive developments, we may be having a different discussion, but at this point, I don't see any concerns with the last, the developments that have come through in the last couple of years.
Okay, thank you. I have a comment. Under additional dwelling units, I like the wording gentle intensification, but just to be, just to clarify, just to be clear, if I wanted to put two bunkies, my house and one in my backyard, I could do that without any permit, without any permission at all?
I wouldn't necessarily use the words bunkie. What you could have is an additional residential unit within your dwelling and one additional residential unit within an accessory building. And you would be required to have a building permit and meet Ontario Building Code and fire separations prior to occupancy of those units.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution, and that is carried, thank you. Item eight point two, Associate Director of Infrastructure and Operations, Josh?
That council of the Town of Elmer receives Report Plan seven twenty-three, Preservicing and Site Alteration Agreement for Centennial State Subdivision Phase Two, Stage B, legally described as lots forty to seventy-two over the registered Plan eleven M ninety, and that council of the Town of Elmer authorizes the mayor to enter into a preservising agreement for Centennial State Subdivision Phase Two, Stage B, again, for lands legally described as lots forty to seventy-two of the registered Plan eleven M ninety as attached to this report.
Mover and a seconder, Counselor D'Rosier and Counselor Rahi. Discussion. Seeing, did you have your hand up?
Yes. Mine's more just a comment more than anything. I'm quite enthusiastic about this development to finally begin. The subdivision, sorry, the subdivision has been incomplete for over twenty years and has been used by various individuals as a dumping ground for various waste materials. From my understanding, this development is zoned for single-family dwellings, which in today's economy is appealing to the average Canadian citizen. I look forward to seeing this phase be developed, adding modest housing to our community.
Sorry. I didn't hear all of that, were you asking me a question?
No.
Glad you were making that comment. Alright, anything, anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution, and that is carried, thank you. Item eight point three, Josh?
That Report Operation seven twenty-three, entitled Elgin Estates Traffic Concerns, be received for information.
Mover and a seconder, Deputy Mayor Barber and a seconder, Counselor D'Rosier, report from Terry?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I'll try to, it's quite a lengthy report, so I'll try to keep it as brief as possible. But council previously requested a report from staff regarding a letter from a resident concerning various traffic-related requests on Bodkin Avenue and Linwood Drive. The main requests were the addition of traffic signals at Linwood Drive and Talbot Street, and parking restrictions, and mailboxes along Bodkin Avenue. The traffic signals requested south of Linwood were proposed to work in tandem with the existing traffic signals at Caverly and Talbot, which were installed in two thousand nineteen. Talbot Street West is designated as a connecting link under the MTO Public Transportation and Highway Improvement Act. This act basically states that no traffic control signal can be installed or altered without previous ministry approval. The total, the typical MTO approval process requires a detailed traffic study and engineering drawings. Class five cost estimates for the engineering and construction for the signal upgrade is two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. In lieu of traffic signals, staff recommend to install a do-not-block intersection sign in the northeast corner of Talbot and Linwood. This would be a cost-effective strategy to help alleviate the issue of westbound traffic stopping and blocking the intersection during a red light. As for the Bodkin Parking, Bodkin Avenue is a curved road with a width of less than eight meters. Although no radar data was collected for this report, Bodkin Avenue is observed to have a high parking volume on the west side. Therefore, staff recommend the removal of parking on the east side of Bodkin Avenue due to the curvature of the road, width of less than eight meters, and a high parking demand. Staff are in the process of preparing an amendment to the traffic and parking bylaw that includes several locations, and Bodkin Avenue will be added to the list. Also, staff have contacted Canada Post for the potential relocation of community mailboxes. Canada Post is reviewing the potential for alternative locations based on their standards and the area serviced. Staff will continue to coordinate with the various agencies and monitor the, monitor the area for the noted issues. On that, I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Questions, comments? Counselor Chapman?
For you, your worship. I just want to say that I, I think that this is a good idea. It kind of curbs some of it without backing up traffic and without a very expensive study being done, so I'm hoping that it, it suits its purpose well, and- So I'm hoping that it, it suits its purpose well, and we can create some calmness in that area.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'd like to thank staff for their quick and thorough response to concern addressed by one of our residents. Thank you very much. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, just carried. Thank you. Item 8.4, report on, by the Director of Operations on Engineering for.
That report Operation 623, entitled Contract Award, Engineering Consulting Services for the Treatment Lagoon Optimization and Expansion, be received for information. And that the council accept the proposal from WT Infrastructure for Provision of Consulting Engineering Service for the Elmer Lagoon upgrades, and further that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the agreement with WT Infrastructure following the terms and conditions in the RFP documents and WT Infrastructure's proposal submission.
Mover in the second. Moved by councillor Chapman, seconded by deputy mayor Barber. Should have the report by Rob first then.
Thank you, your worship. As has been stated, the purpose of this report is to recommend that council accept the proposal from WT Infrastructure for provision of engineering services for the optimization and expansion of our sewage treatment system over time, over the next couple of years. We issued an RFP to secure, secure consultant to do the final design and get the contract tender documents ready. You'll notice from the tender documents or from the, the report that this is certainly not what I would consider a mega project. It's a series of small improvements over the course of a number of years. I think those mega projects, in my opinion, have a tendency to sometimes go off the rails. That's certainly not what we're looking for here. So you'll see that it's a, it's more of a long-term relationship with a design consultant, and that's how the RFP has been structured. So the RFP was awarded not on a low-cost, low-bid approach. The lowest bid did not win the day. It was based on the best value for the town. And WT Infrastructure, after all of the evaluation, presented the best proposal for the town, and it happened to be at a great price along the way, too, so that was a, a bit of a bonus for us there. So we're recommending that the council accept the proposal from WT Infrastructure.
Thank you. Council, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, and that is carried. Thank you. Item 8.5, report from the Chief Administrative Officer.
That report CAO 923, Respecting Recycling Transition in July of 2023, be received for information.
Mover in second, councillor O'Slash and councillor Rahe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just very briefly, I think that the important thing for residents to know is that there, we anticipate there will be no changes in their recycling or blue box services through this process. What will, the biggest impact will be that the town won't be fielding complaints or service issues. It will be the CMO, the third-party user, on behalf of the proponents. And the intent, intention of this change by the province is really to encourage reduction in the development of recyclables. So it's hopeful that now, having proponents, the producers of the, the waste, actually having oversight of the recycling, will, will start to reduce the amount of materials overall. And we do anticipate that it is likely that the same service provider will be servicing this area, too. A lot of this, this issue took so long to sort out, it was almost like untangling a Gordian knot because we were trying to figure out how to best extricate ourselves from our existing agreement in place. And we've reached a, a place where we're comfortable now that we won't be hit with an additional penalty, and we can just walk away now with the substantial savings to the municipality.
Thank you. Discussion, questions, comments? Councillor O'Slash.
Your worship, to Andy, how will the, the, the recycling affect a MRF?
Yeah, that's a, a good question. It is, we anticipate that the, CMO hasn't announced who it will be operating the MRF yet, but we anticipate that it will probably be the same provider, and that this area will likely have the, the same service at the MRF.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, and that is carried. Thank you. New business and matters of urgency? Seeing none. Reading of bylaws and proceedings thereon. Josh.
Right, so we've got three readings. So the resolution reads that council gives three readings to and approves the bylaw 1023, being a bylaw to authorize the signing of an agreement between the Corporation of the Town of Elmer and Smith Pete Roofing and Sheet Metal Limited for the wastewater pump station roof replacements in the amount of $90,105. And further, bylaw 1123, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at the regular council meeting held on February the 1st, 2023.
Have a mover in the second. Moved by councillor Van Rae, seconded by councillor Rod. Comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, and they are carried. Are there any inquiries by members? Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, worship. Is there any other further information available about the unsubstantiated report of the Malahide spy balloon being shot down over Elmer last weekend?
I've, I've watched the news very carefully, and actually, I think the news isn't being carried very well in this area, so it could very well have happened, but we don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor O'Slash.
Further to Deputy Mayor Barber. Deputy Mayor Barber consulted me. I imaged the balloon, the spy balloon, over Malahide, over Elmer. It's geostationary, it hangs over Elmer, and it's spying for Malahide.
Thank you very much.
I forward the image, I forward the image to Andy.
I'm sure the inquiries by members are usually a little more serious than this, but. Any, any serious inquiries by members? Seeing, statements and committee reports by anyone? I have, I have no report. Is there any notice of motion, councillor Van Rae? You have a notice of motion, which you, you read the notice of motion. I kind of find, councillors, that in a notice of motion, we will be discussing this next meeting, and there is no discussion here, just the, the reading of the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Whereas there are currently multiple pedestrian crossovers of varying classifications within the town of Elmer, downtown core and surrounding area. And whereas the pedestrian crosswalk located in the proximity of King Street and Talbot Street East does not currently include similar safety features to the other pedestrian crossovers in the town of Elmer. Now therefore, it would be resolved that staff be directed to prepare a future report outlining the feasibility of implementing an electronic pedestrian crossover in the general proximity of King Street and Talbot Street East for future council discussion and consideration.
Thank you very much. That will appear on next, next meeting's agenda. Next item, there is no, no meeting closed to the public? A German resolution?
That council do now adjourn at 7:58 PM.
Mover in the second. Moved by councillor Rahe, seconded by councillor Des Rosiers. All those in favor, and carried. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.